Just let me know if we're live online because we have a lot of supervisors who will be joining us soon.
We are live online.
Okay, if we could do roll call please.
McIntyre?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
DeCook?
Here.
We do have a forum. If you would all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight our agenda is relatively short and we will make it slightly shorter. We're close to remove agenda item four. Zoning is not quite ready. We can prepare to go forward on that. There's some additional details that need to be worked out before we address it. So we've been pulled number four from the agenda today. With that for some agenda is the, is there any other deletions or corrections? Okay, so consent agenda, number one. All items listed under the consent agenda will be enacted by a motion claims, I have claims figure two million one hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred ninety dollars and eighty-four cents. There are no printers. Minutes to approve closed session meeting August 2, 2021, regular meeting August 3, 2021, special meeting August 5, 2021, closed session meeting August 10, 2021, work session August 10, 2021. See approved step increase for Andrew Butler effective August 19, 2021 in the secondary roads department. D payroll removal Ashley Sinclair on-call dispatcher sheriff's department effective August 6, 2021. E complication overage payout to Sharon Wiley for 142 hours from auditor's budget on or after anniversary date. F approved application for revised fireworks permit for JMM displays and extreme exteriors. G approved approved class C liquor license for Somerset wiring. H set public hearing date for September 7, 2021 at nine thirty-five AM for Ivan and Valentina Pilat regarding the new zoning from C2R to A1 for land located at 14858 118th Avenue in Inola, Iowa. Five oh one two five. I set public hearings regarding repeal of chapter twenty-three restrictions for display and sale of products containing pseudoephedrine. Warren County Code of Ordinances for nine forty AM September 7, 2021. Six ten PM September 21, 2021 and nine forty AM October 5, 2021. J set public hearing date for September 7, 2021 at nine forty-five AM for final flat number two Splendid Acres. K set public hearings regarding repeal of chapter four, accepting and reporting gifts and adopting chapter four prohibition against the acceptance of gifts by county officials, county employees, and independent family members for nine fifty AM September 7, 2021. Six twenty PM September 21, 2021 and nine fifty AM October 5, 2021. Lastly, L set public hearing regarding repeal of chapter three general assistance and adopting revised chapter three general assistance Warren County Code of Ordinances for nine fifty-five AM September 7, 2021. Six fifteen PM September 21, 2021 and nine forty-five AM October 5, 2021.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Discussion, absent that, roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Number two is public hearing for final flat number three Splendid Acres subdivision. I have six oh five phone numbers to be answered. Do you have a public hearing?
This one's beyond.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll calls.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye, we are now in public hearing. Evening.
Hello, so we're just bringing Splendid Acres final plat three to you. The zoning commission has already met on this and they recommend approval to you four to zero that night that we met. This has been in the works for quite a while. You've had, you'll have Splendid Acres plat two coming to you actually on September 7th. As you know, there were some issues with that. Those issues have been worked out and we're ready to move forward with that. Ed Arc is here tonight from Civil Engineering Consultants to answer any questions you have. Basically what happened with Splendid Acres plat three, the road Quincy Trail hadn't been put in. Banda Pool's been out and has put the road in. It looks great. David's on Zoom if you have any questions regarding the roads, but it all looks good. And I think on our end, we're, we're ready to proceed recommending approval. So we haven't had any neighbors speak one way or another towards it and we're ready to wrap this one up. Any questions for me right now?
I have no questions.
Okay. Ed's here if you'd like to.
Sure. That'd be great.
Do you want to come forward?
Good evening.
Good evening. Ed, our Civil Engineering Consultants representing MJM Trust. We also have a few other people here tonight. Mark Cotelli is the attorney helping out with it. And Beth McDonald is a family member of the trust, so. Anyway, Carrie's done a fine job of trying to reviewing where we've been. Been a little bit of an interesting process, but I think plat three's turned out spectacular. If you've been out there, it looks very nice. And we're hoping to have plat two finished up here real soon, so we're ready to move on. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
I don't have any questions. I did have a chance to review it earlier or answer people that are zoning department. I also, oddly, I drove past it today and I should have went into the interior. I didn't, but from my vantage point of the highway, it went. My question's already addressed. Crystal or Derek? Anything? Okay, we are still in public hearing. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to comment, now is your chance. There is a three-minute time limit for online. And David, are you online too?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
I can. Did zoning encapsulate your thoughts on the roads and the improvements?
Yeah, Ed went through all the proper channels. They got a good contractor out there. I mean, they followed the process to a T on that one. And I think it shows by what's out there right now. So our department would recommend approval of that final plat number three.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David or any comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to go to.
I'll second.
To close three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye, we are now out of public hearing. Do the supervisors have any discussion or questions on this matter?
I have no questions.
I have a brief comment and then we'll put it for a vote. The comment just relates to what appears to me to be a lot of work that went into this and. How to say it nicely, maybe some higher quality effort got moved into this from, from a number of different departments and from those involved. And it just buttons it up. It dots the i's and crosses the t's and then we have an easy decision before us. That is what I anticipate and what I prefer versus a lot of things left to figure out and some upset neighbors and all sorts of problems. So I just wanted to commend you all for doing a nice job getting it cleaned up and I look forward to looking good. So roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations. You have a good night. Next on our agenda is our engineer David Carroll, number three approved speed limit change on the established detour route for bridge replacement. Project number BRS dash CHBP dash C zero nine one, pren one three three, and pren slash GB dash nine one. Mr. Carroll?
So this is for the bridge replacement project just south of La Cona. The detour route will be on the gravel portions of our roadway. It's about a two-mile detour route. Being that it's on from a lower holding road, a little more narrow, obviously pretty hilly down there. Discussing with Crystal as well, thought it'd be a good idea to drop the speed limit down. By bringing it to the board meeting, this actually makes it regulatory and enforceable should there be any issues out there. We obviously plan on dust controlling the whole route and resurfacing it with rock, but this would just be another measure to contribute to better safety out there. Even if the dust control wears out over time, it'll, it should knock the dust down if people are obeying those speed limits. Not picking up as much dust if you're driving thirty-five or forty miles per hour versus fifty-five.
Understood, understood. Is there any questions for our engineer?
No questions.
Yeah, and it's not something that you can exactly control, David, but a little dab of rain in the forecast might help with the dust too. And we can sure use them. Okay, well, what's before us today is a speed limit change. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the speed limit change on the established detour route for bridge replacement. For the project number BRS dash CHBP dash C zero nine one, pren one three three, and pren dash GB dash nine one.
I'll second. Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Number four has been pulled from the agenda. That brings us to number five, consider Justice Center change request with possible actions to move, action to move forward with change order. We have an A through F.
Did, did you delete item four in the beginning?
We did, Crystal.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
We have multiple change orders on the Justice Center being rolled presented to the board in our last work session. I don't have really any additional information. I've moved to approve. The change orders. Do these one at a time or I'd make a motion to approve A through F, A, B, C, D, E, and F. Do you have any questions?
Crystal, did you want to run through those again with him or with the board or not?
Yeah. I know that we had some questions about them and we had a closed session, but I don't know that all of the questions that we had pertaining to them weren't answered.
Let's take them, let's take them individually then. A, number sixty-five, Darren, you mind?
Yeah, this was our, the directive to change was already approved by the board about, I don't know, six or seven weeks ago. It's been in front of board. These are data ports. This was brought forward by our IT group. Involves cableing data ports, just basically to give our IT group and, and our employees the necessary network for wireless functionality and a strong network.
Number, yeah, number sixty-eight.
This was outside of the Sally Port. We didn't have a suitable subgrade to pour concrete. The soil was inspected and deemed not proper for concrete placement, so that's what this is regarding.
Then do you have a financial figure that correspond, what was sixty-five?
Sixty-five was forty thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. And sixty-eight was eight thousand five oh one seventy, eight thousand five hundred and one dollars and seventy cents.
Number sixty-nine.
Yeah, this was just that ad aluminum opening at the former overhead door for RF one one nine one R two. The amount was five thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
And D, please?
Yeah, this was the laundry room duct work design that the contractor couldn't, couldn't do the original scope. And we had to change the design of the laundry room duct work all the way from the basement up through the roof. And the amount is seven thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. And then E, change order number seventy-six, this is where the card reader installation issues when we changed some of the sheriff, sheriff's rooms. We had to change the card reader locations. The amount was thirteen thousand six hundred and forty-six dollars. There were three different. Systems that had to be checked, the location needed to be changed. And change order seventy-seven was to revise the commercial door opening. And change the detention opening to a commercial opening. The amount was five thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-one cents.
As I recall, I think it was the change order number seventy.
Yeah, what were your questions?
Was the question.
What was your question, Crystal?
It was, you said it was the design problem in the beginning?
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, there was a design issue. From the original set of documents, the contractor had needed to redesign it for. I really don't have much more information for you beyond that.
Okay. And then I know that we added some, some rock because of the unsuitable subgrade for change order number sixty-eight. So if we were removing a subgrade and adding rock, you said it came out to eight thousand dollars?
Well, they had to dig out the, the subsoil, so there was some excavating work that had to be done and addition of rock and. So, you know, they had to do some design around how much rock, what kind of rock, I'm sure, so, yep.
It's not a very big area. Oh wait, the entire Sally Port?
This was outside of the Sally Port in the concrete that came up, that is on the, the exterior of the Sally Port.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
The other question that I think, I'm not positive that was addressed in our prior ratings was seventy-seven, commercial door opening for PR thirteen. I just don't, I just don't. Did we discuss that earlier? And then I felt like there was.
There was a.
I felt like there was a couple that were going in our direction to present well financially. I've had, seen those ones.
That, that just was like the yard exterior. That had to do with card readers. Had been prep for card readers, had to add card readers to these doors, deleted hardware. There's going to be a hardware credit coming. We, we can talk about that one later, or you know, actually, we can just let these go until we, we cover them in better detail next time. You know, we have this information to you. It's all on your packet, but you know, we're not.
That was the only, Derek, that was the only one. I just didn't recall C and F that privately. The other ones I, I'm not aware of it, so I'd be helpful moving A through E. I know we have sort of an asteron D, but I, you know, one of those, the Sally Port aspects are, you know, so I, I'm pretty, I'm pretty okay with moving them. I just needed, wanted to hear a little bit more on seventy-seven. Yeah, I'm not sure what was driving the change.
I'm, I guess I'm not real sure. Seventy-seven. Take that one off.
For the sake of movement and forward, I will make a motion to approve A through E. And then we can, we can come back to number seventy-seven at our next work session.
Sounds good.
Is that fair? Okay, so that's my motion. I'll make a motion to approve A through E. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
Hang on, I was on mute. Um, can we omit?
D?
B and D, B as in ball and D as in door.
I'll just say that if we do this. If we don't approve, you know, these change orders, it will impact our schedule. So if that's okay with you guys, it's okay with me and we can, we can omit all these, you know, I don't feel any pressure to get these through for you guys. You know, it's up to you. Crystal, we don't have to do change orders if you don't want to.
I just have that, my question's on B and then D. That's.
Well, what question do you have on B? Because you said it was a design issue. We covered that. What other questions do you have?
I'd like a little more research to see if that subgrade, it just seemed excessive to me for some rock and some excavation.
Good. I've got a, I've got a motion before us for A through E. I have a colleague requesting a friendly amendment to add, to remove B and D from it. At this point, I'm, I'm inclined to, to go through with the motion and see how the vote turns out for A through E. So I will not be responsive to a friendly amendment on that one. Roll call please.
Is there a second on that?
Uh, Peter. Oh, yeah, Peter.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye, A through E passed and we'll, we'll address F at next work session. Next work session. And I think at that point too, we can certainly, if there's some additional questions, those are, we can still get it. The, the reason I'm, I'm inclined to do that is that, that Sally, that, that was done months ago at this point. If there's an issue with it, we can, it's one of those issues where you're going to have to take it up at a later time. That's already been done, so the project can move forward, so. Number six. I have receive and file reports. We have three reports tonight, a general assistance report, Kaya Cota report, and the quarter report. We have a motion to receive and file reports.
I'll make the motion to receive and file reports.
Second. Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye.
Number seven, budget reports. Megan?
Okay, so we've got the first month of our new fiscal year, starting with expenditures. Everything looks pretty good. The only one running a little hot is IT. And that's just because we had a larger payment to Tyler of seventy-four thousand and, and eight thousand paid it to Schneider Geospatial. So those are nothing, abnormal. It's just where they fell, being so early in the year. If we move on to our revenues. The, both the auditor and our non-departmental, it's just kind of the timing of the year. Our revenue, we wouldn't expect to have it yet. And then the capital projects, we have that nine-one-one bond funds that are going to be, actually should be coming through tomorrow. Other than that, we look pretty good. And then finally, if we're looking at our fund balances. Our biggest difference would just again be the capital projects for the Justice Center and that just makes sense as we are going through the project and paying for things that fund balance is going down. Any questions?
No questions.
All right, that's all I've got.
Thank you. All right, next up, consider claims from Iowa Process Service with possible action. It looks like we have two. I'll move them, I'll move them separately. First statement, one nine three eight three six, any amount of. Seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Motion to approve payment.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
I'll stand.
DeCook?
Aye, motion carries. And second, statement one nine three eight two seven, any amount of three thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Motion to approve payment of.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
I'll stand.
DeCook?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Supervisors report, who would, who would like to go first? I'll pass.
I think you skipped one.
What's the three?
Mark is here for number nine. You skipped number nine.
Oh, I didn't have either. I think she knew I was going to say it this afternoon. I didn't have either. Sorry about that. Mark, come on.
I think he was going to present. I'm here for questions.
Okay. Oh. Megan, I see you're. Okay, so we, yeah, that's right. Consider permanent easement, so number nine is actually not the supervisor's report. It's consideration of permanent easement for Great Western Trail with possible action.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Alex Crabbe, Assistant Warren County Attorney. I am pinch hitting for Dawn this evening, as you guys are all aware. And to continue the, the baseball analogy, because I don't want to strike out on three straight pitches looking. I'm going to read these carefully crafted notes that Dawn provided me this afternoon, so. Earlier in the year, the city of West. the city of Weston Moyn and developer, D.R. Horton, approached the board supervisors requesting the county cede ownership of a portion of the Great Western Trail to the developer or the city of Weston Moyn to allow access to Fox Ridge, a real estate development area. The board declined to cede the county's property rights to another entity. However, because the developer really wants to proceed with this development, Fox Ridge, the Warren County Conservation Board, the city of Weston Moyn, and Warren County Attorney's Office have worked together to draft a permanent easement for the Great Western Trail at three intersections. The intersections at South Arlo Road and Veterans Parkway and southeast Thirty-Fifth Street and Veterans Parkway have already been completed. The intersection of southeast Twenty-Fifth Street and Veterans Parkway, which provides the entrance into this Fox Ridge development in Weston Moyn, has not been completed. The easement that's been drafted specifically addressed some of the county's concerns about maintaining ownership of the trail and maintenance of the trail for the users. The easement also addresses signage on the city street and on the trail and the construction of an altered trail route at the expense of the city of Weston Moyn. So, because of all the hard work that was put in between the three entities, the county attorney's office and the conservation board would ask the board supervisors approve the permanent easement for the Great Western Trail. If you have any questions, hopefully, Mark is here to enlighten her. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for attorney's office or conservation department?
No questions.
Crystal? I would entertain a motion. Megan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the permanent easement for the Great Western Trail.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. Carries, may I check? All right, now number nine, supervisor's report. Who would like to go first?
I'd go first. I've had multiple meetings on the, on the Justice Center, internal meetings and external meetings. We're going through some negotiations with our architect. And we've also developed weekly meetings with the construction manager where we're going over the executed boards on a pretty much a weekly basis at this point. I met with the treasurer to discuss potential amid process where we're trying to get around the appointment only and trying to build some flexibility into the system. And potentially some new staff in the treasurer's office at some point. I had a post meeting with Connie Graunle and I discussed why she departed Warren County and learned some of the issues around the insurance company, Divaco, and those types of things. So, very interesting meeting. Met with zoning twice in the last two weeks. Attended a Republican committee meeting. Repeated the HR act and put in our recommendations for four candidates. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McIntyre?
Aye, thank you. After our last board meeting, I attended our nine-one-one Warren County board meeting. Met with ADP and had a meeting with our auditor and HR and other personnel to take over payroll. Also met with nine-one-one director and attorney, assistant attorney. Attended a funeral for a member of Greenfield Plaza. And that is my report.
Thank you, Crystal. My, I'll keep pretty brief and add some highlights. Attended a meeting to reinstall our county assessor. Discussed with the sheriff multiple topics, inclusive of trail cams, which turn out budgeted for in this fiscal year. Nutrition, jail and dispatch staffing. Discussed some of our topics today with zoning. Also, met with county attorney's office on various matters, including litigation and a couple other quasi-zoning topics. Spent some time reviewing a pretty remarkable stack of HR payroll applications and started the process of sorting through those. I'm hopeful that at our next work session, we should be able to sort of compare notes and see if we have the applicants that both make, or make all three lists and move that process forward. Because I do think that is important for the county. We also have some funds budgeted for that between payroll and HR. And I think it's, I think it's key to keep that on the front burner. Checking mills and made some phone calls back. That'll be my supervisor's report. Next up is public input. All comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The board will not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. No public info will be allowed for any of today's agenda items. Is there anyone from the public or online who would like to comment? Oh, I will, I want... If you are hearing some background noises, those are, the terrazzo floor is getting polished up. So, I apologize. I'm not sure if that's picking up or not through, through our technology. That is what is happening. They are working on that at night to not be disruptive to our employees or folks who are in the building during the day. Anyone in the room? Is there anyone online, Megan, that is raising their hand to comment?
No.
Okay. Our next meeting date will be September the seventh. That's at nine-thirty AM meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
DeCook?
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.